I could do about it tonight. Usually I'm in a silent location, but I'm not tonight, so. Okay. And I call the June 29, 2021, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Do we have any alternates?
We do not.
Okay, so the only people here tonight would be Tim, Pleasdale, Ken Petrini, and myself, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that constitutes a quorum. So item number two, approval of the May 25th meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the meeting minutes from May 25.
I'll second them. So Ken, you weren't there at that meeting, so I'll second them. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No one. Okay, Abby, do you have any receipt of applications?
We do. We have two applications to receive, both for development of the same property. One is PL 21-6, request of Walter Johnson Cow, owner of Safe Futures Incorporated applicant for the subdivision of property located at 990 and 994 Hartford Turnpike. And action on that will be required by 9/2 of 21. And then the second concurrent application to the same property is PL-21-7, request of Walter Johnson Cow owner and Safe Futures Incorporated applicant for the site plan approval to locate a business office and classrooms at 994 Hartford Turnpike IG Zone in accordance with Sections 11 and 22 of the zoning regulations. And as shown on the plans entitled Safe Futures Incorporated, 994 Hartford Turnpike, Waterford, Connecticut. And action required by 9/2 of 21 as well. And both of those applications are believed to be complete.
Just for the record, I'll announce it every time we address this issue, but I'm on the Board of Safe Futures and I am head of the Site Selection and Building Committee for this particular project, so I will be recusing myself on any discussion that this project has coming up. But tonight it's just for receipt of applications, so. That's it for applications?
Yeah.
Okay, we can move on to item number four. Are the applicants ready, or do they need a little bit of time to?
Lucian is just coming in now. I see the versus on. Sergio, I'm going to make you co-host, and then you can determine if you're ready to begin.
Thank you. I think I see Brian. I'm assuming that's Brian Kent. And Paul and Barbara Diversa and Lucian, I see you are on, so great. Yeah, I think we're, I think we're ready to go.
Okay, the floor is yours for item number four, application review of number PL-21-5, request of Barbara Diversa and David Liebow, trustees and owners, Paul and Barbara Diversa applicants for coastal site plan review and approval in accordance with Section 25.4 of the zoning regulations for construction of a new single-family home at 172 Niantic River Road, R40 Zone. And as shown on plans titled Diversa Single Family Residential Property, action required by 1921. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Commission and staff, thank you. For the record, Sergio Trenzia, I'm the President and Principal of Trenzia and Associates with offices located at 99 Mechanic Street in Pocatuck, Connecticut. I am a registered engineer, site civil engineer in the state of Connecticut. And the application that was prepared and the plans, the site plans and survey were prepared in my office under, under my responsible charge. With me this evening are Paul and Barbara Diversa, the owners and applicant for the proposed development of 172 Niantic River Road. Also with me this evening is Lucian Vita of Vita Design Group, is the project architect. The plans that were submitted to you that are the architectural plans were prepared by, by his office. And with also with me this evening is Brian Kent of Kent Frost, Kent Frost Landscape Architects. And they, they prepared the, Brian prepared the landscape plans that are part of this application. As indicated, the subject property, I'm just going to share a screen here for as far as the presentation goes, give me one moment, please. Right now, I'm just bringing up the, the town GIS, just to orient everybody with the project location. Project as, as indicated is at 172 Niantic River Road, map 129 lot 5156. To orient you, it's, the reason we're here tonight is for the coastal area management application. We are along, obviously, Niantic River Road to the east, the Niantic River to the west. Mago Point down, down to the south, and I believe it's Boston Post Road up to the north. And there, you know, a lot of residential property in between. So if we zoom in to the property. The property was formally developed as a, a single-family residence. The GIS is slightly off. You'll see from my land survey and site plans that it does not exactly match. It appears to be an error in the GIS mapping, but obviously the survey stands to correct it. The, the former residence, what's left on the property now is basically some rubble from that former residence that was demolished. I have some photos of that I can share with you, just to give you some site context. But you can see down in this, closer to the water, there's a retaining wall and an outstructure. It's actually a changing room that the former residents utilized on the way down to a path that led down to a concrete pier that is located on the Niantic River for water access through some stone steps. And generally, the site slopes from east to west towards the river, as do majority of the properties along Niantic River Road, on the side of Niantic River Road, had pretty, pretty steep slopes, relatively speaking, as, as one goes from east to west on the, on the property. So I'll bring up the, the site survey. It's a little bit clearer. Can you all see the site survey just brought up? So the, the survey is, shows that, you know, the, the access to the property. There's a split driveway. One of them, one of the driveways accessed a garage where this, this rubble pile is. And then another one, there was a house down below with another, I believe, another garage. And then there was access down to, through this wall, some stairs. I can see the changing rooms, and then this more or less comes down to some steps to gain access to the water. And you can see that generally, you know, the flat areas where the, where the previous structures were, it's relatively steep in between. You can see by the close topographic contour lines. And then getting, getting further down, you know, the grades tend to be more, a little more gradual as you get closer to the water, and then it gets, it steepens right up. The site is located and is not in any flood hazard, at least the, the, the developable proportion of the site. You can see this flood hazard line, notes a shaded X-zone. That's a little to no flooding hazard at all, down to a flood zone of a V-zone with a flood elevation of 14 on this steep slope in this area. The wetlands were flagged by a certified wetlands biologist, December 18, 2020, Abazinus Environmental Services. It's located, was provided in the application. There are two regulated, two regulated wetland features or coastal features on this site, one of which is the estuarine embankment, and that's the B-series flags closest to the Niantic River. And then there's a, a coastal bluff, and that's the A-series at the top of the embankment. So that's more, made, the majority of the reason we're here with, for you, with you this evening is because of this coastal feature and being so close to the river that we need to show that we have done all our due diligence and in design and to get a coastal area management permit for this property. I will also note that we are within a natural diversity database area. The entire property is pretty much within the NDB. With that, kind of give you the lay of the land of the, of the existing site. Actually, I can show you a few photos of what the site used to look like. This is a, assuming that you can see the photos. This is a picture of the previous house. I don't know if the diverses are going to keep that color scheme. Lucian Vita can address that, but the, the red house, this is the, the stairs that lead down to these changing rooms that are still in, actually still intact. The, the main house at the top of the stairs. You can see a wraparound deck. You can see the, the, the changing rooms in the background in the, in the wall that, that held up the retaining wall that held the earth in the, in the building behind it, as well as you accessing the site to, to garages that you see on the aerial. There was a split driveway, one leading to the house and the garage associated with that, and then a second garage further up gradient on the site. All these structures are pretty much long gone at this time, and, and this is why the site is vacant currently and looking to redevelop. Just for a little more context. This is the site as it is now. You can still see the changing room and the wall, but as you can see, all of the other structures have been demolished off of the site. So with that, I'm going to bring up my proposed site plan. So jumping right into the, to the proposed site plan, we're more or less keeping the driveway entrance in the same location. The. There'll be a, a parking driveway area, which leads to a, a garage on the north side of the house. The main residence will have varying levels, and Lucian and Brian will get into a little bit more detail on how that translates with the topography. But the biggest challenge on this site was building a, a structure that could build, we'd be built into the slope and worked with the topography without making a tremendous amount of, of changes to the existing topo. So one of the, you know, the most significant requirements, at least of the CAM and for any site development plans, is to make sure that with the increase in, in, in the impervious area for the site, that we've accommodated our stormwater prior to any discharge off the site to protect the coastal feature. So as such, you can see there's a series of, you know, decks and walkways to get in and out of the different portions of the house. A pool is back here. This is the, the pool off the deck with an infinity edge. And then to the south, a separate home gym that is detached from the house as an accessory structure. To handle all the stormwater from these impervious surfaces, we're introducing some bio-retention areas, or more commonly known as rain gardens. So we're taking all the roof runoff and diverting them to these shallow depressions that will be landscaped with native plants and species, which Brian can get into as part of his presentation. The, generally, the, the site and the, the two-dimensional plan doesn't show it justice. I believe Lucian will have a little bit more context with some 3D, you know, elevations and renderings. But basically, you know, the, the, the. The buildings are graduated from, from the highest, the lowest points, and really to work in, into that slope. And then there is some walkways to bring the access down to the, to the water, to the existing concrete pier, some stairs. But we are ending all of our proposed development right at the top of that bluff, so as not to go into any significant permitting requirements or any disturbance of that coastal feature, that, that coastal bluff. So the, the shallow depression areas will handle the stormwater. We do have one area that we are going to be proposing to put underground as with the allowance of the depth of groundwater and ledge. There is some ledge on this site, which we've, at the advisement of staff, we've conducted additional soil excavations. And there is some shallow depth of ledge in, in some of the areas that will have to be contended with, with respect to the final construction of the building and some of the stormwater features. But at this time, we have designed everything around that so that at all proper separations, all the soils are adequate in order to handle the stormwater adequately for water quality and quantity coming off of the single-family residence as proposed. During construction, there's, there'll be soil erosion and sediment controls implemented, straw, straw waddle or silt fence on the downgradient sides of any slope. We will have designated stockpile areas, as actually indicated on this plan. Temporary sediment traps and, and then to, to capture stormwater and any sediment from any disturbed, any disturbed portions of the site until it's, it's fully stabilized and either vegetated or has its permanent impervious surface. We have a full operation and maintenance plan for all the stormwater features so that in perpetuity, those, that these areas will be maintained with the landscape and cleaned out periodically, and make sure that their infiltration capacity is still maintained. As far as the other utilities go, this was a previous residence. We're going to be tying into all the previous utilities, which are available on Niantic River Road. That includes building sewer, sanitary sewer, public water, electric and communication. And we'll be burying propane tanks on the site to, for, for purposes of, for the use of propane gas for certain amenities to the, to the home. With that, I think that covers most of the technical aspects, and I'm sure the more boring aspects of the house. And I look forward to seeing the more interesting things that Lucian and Brian will be showing you next. So whatever pleases the Commission, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. Or if you have any, or we'd like to go to the next part of the presentation.
Does anybody have any questions, Sergio?
The only question was, that I had was on the test pits, the test pit data. What did you get for depth of ledge in groundwater in the, both in the? Rain garden areas?
Yeah, so, um, let's see here. We, you can see on this plan, there's a test pit up in this area here, test pit three, and then one and two. I just have to pull up those results. It might just take me a minute.
Sure.
I don't have them off the top of my head. Just give me one minute and I'll be able to pull those up. Nice thing about working over Zoom is that, get my fingertips here. Hold on one second. Okay. So test hole one. We can go around the horn here. Test pit number one, we had 49 inches to seasonal high groundwater and 84 inches of total depth. And depth of ledge was also 84 inches. Test hole number two, as you move north on the site in this area, it's about 24 inches to, to the ledge. So this was relatively shallow as you move in this direction. Test hole three, no problems here. We got down 98 inches, did not encounter any ledge, about 40 inches to seasonal high groundwater. And test hole number four. 45 inches, total depth, 45 inches to ledge, about 28 inches to seasonal high groundwater table.
So what depth are you putting, I guess, on test hole three and test hole four? What depth are you putting the infiltrators or the?
Yeah, the infiltrators are actually in the best test hole number three. We had 98 inches. So. Almost, you know, nine, nine feet, eight, nine feet there. So that's, that's where this one, the depth of that, I believe, is on the site plan in the detailed sheet. May have some details here. Let's see. This is actually the water quality treatment. I believe, okay, here they are. Sorry about that. Yep, so Storm Tech units, they're the SC740 models. I think they're about 30 inches tall, with six inches, six inches stone around. All the calculations here, bottom of stone is at 9.5. And the existing grade was at about 15. And the proposed grade is going to be about the same, 14, 15. So we have adequate separation though, to groundwater and ledge.
I guess the, it's the, the system to the north or, yeah, to the north seems a little bit, maybe a little bit more problematic, but.
Well, the rain gardens are at grade, so we're okay with those. And then we actually, the original plan was to put an infiltrator unit at test pole, test pit number four. But, but at, yeah, I don't know if you're looking at the same plan, but we had revised it. So I thought if you have a dated plan, but the most recent plan we submitted with our response to comments, we altered that design to incorporate some rain gardens as opposed to underground infiltration because of the shallow depth of ledge.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Tim, do you have any questions? Or, Ken, are you all set?
Yep, I'm all set.
I don't have any questions.
I do have just a question. I, I think I'm looking at a different C2 than you are. So.
Quite possibly. This one was submitted. And I know Ms. Fitzgerald received it. And I, I think that, I with, with. With Mark being, whoops, sorry about that. With Mark being out, he had us respond to the comments that we would be changing these things for final plan. So you may not have the same plan in front of you, but the, I, to be. The only things that really changed were the, the way the drainage has been routed because of the results of those test holes.
I think one other thing that has been changed that I, that I was going to ask you a question on is the home gym overhang. I have 54.1 inches to lean high water, right? And you, in, you said you were two and a half feet over, or somebody said you were two and a half feet over. It doesn't appear to be. So did you change the plan for some reason?
Um, I believe they identified that we were from the rear setback. We were over by two and a half feet, so we, we just pulled that overhang in. You can see the roof overhang here.
Okay.
Great, Greg, if I may, the, this is Abby Pierce, all planning director, books, can't see cases. The, the intent, I think, was to, the Commission received the, the application set, which was the basis of comments and the basis of the conditions and findings that have been recommended by staff that were presented to the Commission. This set of plans, as Sergio mentioned, was in response to those conditions, but was not submitted in time for us to get it out to the Commission and then actually go through the, the full staff review. So the one, it, it appears that, you know, certainly the roof overhang has been addressed, and many of the, the pieces that were, were comments in the staff review originally will be addressed with this plan. And one additional condition that staff would be recommending would be to, that the final location and design of any stormwater treatments units can be modified on the final plan with staff approval. And the reason for adding that condition is because the, the plan that the Commission is acting on is the one that you, you received, that was part, that was part of the application. This is a draft of that final plan that could be modified to accommodate the stormwater elements as to, to, to address those final staff comments. So then what you're, what you're seeing is what staff would see if the plan, if the original plan was approved and conditions were all met.
Okay, I, I understand now. I thought the overhang was two and a half feet, but you cut the overhang, which is a lot bigger than that, back two and a half feet. I get it now. I see it. I'm all set. If anybody else has any questions, otherwise we'll move on to the next speaker.
One, one just quick question regarding the access to the, by the bluff. How is that, is that, you had mentioned in your presentation that it was going to be dealt with at a future, future date for the water access? Now, I'm just more of a curiosity, the, the old access, how did they get down? And did any picture that you have show how they actually accessed? Or I guess, let me step back. They're not, there's no, nothing being proposed, but I guess I'm just looking at the access. It kind of ends there at a cliff, and then you kind of jump off to the stairs. I just wonder what the thought was in the future.
Certainly. Um, this is the proposed access, as you can see, but let me go, your first question was.
The historic, history, historical.
Yeah, historically. So let me pull up that, that plan, just the existing survey.
Yep.
Okay, so if you can envision, you know, the house was up in this area. There were steps to come down. That was that photo I showed you previously, which I can bring up. Pretty much, as far as I know, that there, this, this slope here is, is gradual enough where you kind of just cut across here, and then it marries up with these steps on, along the, the down, which take you down across the bluff, and then tie into this concrete pier. So it's, it's gradual enough. Let me see if I can bring up a photo of it that might. So basically, here's the stairs.
Yep.
And then you can see, this is, this is pretty gradual grade, not that steep. So I believe they cut across this, what was probably a manicured yard area. And then you can see this railing here.
Yep.
That's basically, they basically married up with this, these stone steps. They're all granite steps that you can come down and then access the pier.
Oh, that, that definitely helps. That makes a lot more sense.
Yep. Okay, let's move on to the next presenter.
Okay, I can, Brian, do you want me to take this and you'll follow up with the landscape?
Sure, that sounds good to me.
All right, thank you. Okay, let me just bring my screen up here. Okay. All right, great. So. You, you've probably seen some renderings already, so you're familiar with what we're proposing. But just to help share the sort of thought process that, that went into the design, because, you know, I don't think it's super relevant from a CAM perspective i- in most cases. But in this case, I think there are some aspects of the design that speak very much to the site. And so it might be helpful to, to know what our, our objectives were here. So we are definitely dealing with a, a rather challenging site. I think many of the properties along the river, along the Niantic River here are facing the same challenge, where you have a really steep drop-off from the, the grade at, at the road down to the river. Almost about 40 feet of grade change at its, at its most disparate points. And so, you know, the question started coming to mind, well, how do we, how do we place a house where we're not going to be sort of leveling off one area and sort of focusing the, the massing of the house in that area, and then have it sort of, kind of tower above the land below it? And so, rather than, rather than sort of finding that sweet spot at the top, that, that, that flat area, and focusing all of the, the structure at this point, and creating a two-to-three-story building right here, we said, well, you know, what, what if we followed the, the actual slope of the land? And so when you think about this. And so when you think about this house, as it sits in the property, from the side view, this kinda gives you a sense for how this, this design does just that, so if we were to kind of draw a line from one point to the other, from the beginning to, from the low end to the high end of the house, you can see how that, that follows a similar slope at, of the property itself. And that was our goal, really was to integrate the building into the hillside for, for a number of reasons. Number one is because if we were to site the building just at the top here, it would sort of crowd the street, it would create a little bit of an overbearing kind of presence to the street. And it would create separation from the whole point of, of the allure of this property, which is the river below, it'd sort of force it towards the top of the hill. So the, the design that we were looking to achieve wanted to actually integrate better into the hillside, and we started thinking about the building as, almost as a retaining wall. A way to use a building to sort of set it into the, into the land so that we're not creating one big flat part and one big hill, which could lead to erosion. And instead, we would work with the land as opposed to working against it. And so that gave birth to this notion of, you know, of course, having to deal with limiting the extent of driveway and keeping that close to the street as possible. And so we couldn't really, we couldn't really go too far down with the entry level of the house here. And so, and so we, we sort of found the right sweet spot for the, for the elevation of the garage. And from there, rather than allowing, there's maybe interest, interest words there, rather than allowing our our house to work from there up, we said, let's work from there down. And so we only have this small volume as a second story volume above this entry level. And the entry level itself is really only comprised of essentially two rooms. This kind of entry area and, and the garage. And then this bedroom at this level here. And from that point down, you sort of really work your way down to what is a main living level of the house, which oftentimes would be considered the sort of basement level of the house, but in this case, we've sort of set it at, at a height at the midpoint in the property to sort of allow the diverses to engage the riverside at a, at a closer, you know, proximity to the riverfront. And the other thing you might notice is that the house is broken into little nodes or nodules of spaces. And the idea here is that there's a real appreciation for the landscaping and, and, and nature of the site. And we wanted to introduce moments which Brian can speak more to, and he takes the, the stage. Where we could introduce you know, new landscaping that will grow and mature and really allow this building to feel like it's, it's part of a, of a more sort of natural and, and heavy kind of planted setting. As opposed to clear cutting the site and plunking a house, sort of, you know, in, in, in the absence of consideration of the, the qualities of the site. And so here we have pockets where we'll be introducing landscaping here. And here, here, and of course on the sides, and so ultimately, when people view the house from the river, which, you know, does get a lot of boaters moving up and down it, they will see something which is sort of weaved in and out of the, the, the natural hillside and landscape of the site. The style is, is, you know, I think the, what struck me about the diverse's way they regarded the property is that, well, first of all, they're clearly enamored with, with the, the, the site, the area, the town. They live two doors down right now and are situating themselves two doors up on, on this property, so they clearly have a, a, a love for the, the beauty of this, this site, and so we were looking to kind of create a place where they could actually, the, what would you call it, staycation was like the real popular term during COVID. So this design was, was born during COVID, and so the idea is a, a site where they could really spend most of their time and enjoy and feel like they've, they're at their own little personal vacation home on the water, and so that gave birth to this sort of what'd you call it, sort of resort-like feeling to the structures, very kind of low-key, at, at, especially at the street side. Almost a historic feel, like an ancient kind of masonry crumbled wall, but also a little bit of a, a nod to the, to the modern and to the current design trends, which are embodied in these white, clean volumes, and so stylistically, they're looking to create a very sort of relaxed and, and sort of home away from home setting. Let me see, I think, and, and I think the, one of the final aspects that we were considering is the way that the, the back of the house engages the site. And I believe Brian's model is probably a bit more accurate than mine, he's has more accurate landscape setting. But we wanted to sort of position the house so everything flows out to the river. As you can see, the way it addresses a river is far more kind of pervasive and thorough than the way it addresses the street. And so that that largely informed the way in which the house was kind of situated on the site. Yeah, and so I think from, from a CAM perspective, hopefully that gives some, some insight that's relative to how the, the, the land inspired the design and, and try to work with the site as much as possible. So if there's any, any questions, happy to, happy to, many, any insight I can.
Anybody have any questions? Ken?
No.
Are you on me, okay, Tim?
I know.
Okay. Do we have another presenter? Or are you all, are you all set?
I'm all set, I think we have Brian, who, who, who has the landscape side of things.
Yeah, so I'd be happy to walk you through the landscape approach. Good evening, commissioners of staff, I'm Brian Kent from Kenton Frost. I am going to share screen now and will walk you through the landscape plan. So this drawing encapsulates our approach to the preservation of the the, the key features, natural features of the site, which are the mature hardwood trees. And they're arranged principally around the outer edges, so you can identify them by the black dots in the center of the, the tree symbols. And the size of the dot is proportional to the, the trunk size of the tree, so you can immediately see that the, you know, the grandfather tree on this site is up here on the north side. And then you've got smaller trees, which are still large in stature by and large, are, are arrayed mostly on the north side, and then a couple on the south, and then a couple down by the water. And they're mostly oak trees. And our approach from the beginning has been to do all we can through design and through the anticipation of construction practices to protect the trees. And that's involved working with the architect and the owners to to devise foundation walls and other approaches where we're getting, you know, within the drip line of the, the trees that have less of an impact in the root zone. So that's our number one priority is to protect these trees, because the character of the site is, is really influenced by the overhang and the, you know, the enclosure and the shade and the habitat that these trees provide. And a lot of the, of the architectural design thought process involved in reducing the impact on those areas as well, so we worked very well together in coming up with this strategy. We preserve the existing driveway, as you can see, so the existing driveway is in the lower right. Basically, the alignment of the existing driveways by large is our alignment. We've reduced the, 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 the parking area to what's only necessary, and we've contained it with a, a re, low retaining wall to minimize the grading upslope towards the road that would otherwise impact these trees. That said, we've then looked at the, the character of the vegetation on the existing site, and because it's largely disturbed in the, in the central area, it's not a very native habitat or a native community of plants. You know, it contains many of the usual suspects of, of weeds and invasive plants like mugwort and multi-flower rose, it's, it's brambles, it's really a overgrown collection of those kinds of plants that move into a disturbed site. As of course you're familiar with, in other sites of this nature in the town. So our approach is to clean up the, those kinds of plants and to mostly just, just introduce native plants, in fact, all the plants that we are proposing for the site are native plants. From ground covers and grasses all the way up to understory trees, we're not, we're not putting very many trees in, but in a couple of key locations, we are, we are proposing some, a couple of of native trees, one in, one in the parking area to shade some of the paving and, and some of the house there, and one down by the, the outdoor gym area as well. So the, 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 the principal plant coverage will be a, a wildflower grass seed mix, and it'll be plants that can colonize and, and expand and densify. And, and crowd out the, the, you know, the weeds and invasives that want to come back, so it will require some, some ongoing maintenance, at least for the first couple of years, until those plants are established. And that's this, this crosshatch, this tone of gray that you see over the majority of the site, so that's the the wildflower grassland mix. It's great for habitat, for pollinators and for songbirds, especially birds like goldfinches, which really like these kinds of plants. And so that will be a principal feature of the site. And, and we will look for opportunities to introduce perhaps some understory flowering trees where we don't damage any of the existing tree root zones, so that's something that we're going to be looking at as we get into a little closer to construction. And that would just be involving some small small seedling type trees, native trees. But closer to the house itself, we have plants, as Sergio mentioned, plants for the rain gardens. And the important thing to know about rain gardens is they don't stay wet, they're, they're wet when it, you know, after a storm, but they and by and large quickly dry out, so we're not putting wetland plants in rain gardens, we're putting native perennials and some low shrubbery, those kinds of native plants that will help to help to draw up the water, but also will be sustainable through the dry months, especially like summer months. And so those are native shrubs, if, if, if you, if you looked at closely at the plant list, you'll see, you know, some of the chokeberry and, and there, there are zoom in there for just a second, just so you can, you can hear what some of the names of these trees or plants shrubs and trees are. Chokeberry, sweet shrubs, sweet fern, those are all, those are all native summer sweets, is a, is a common native shrub, inkberry, holly, deciduous holly. And, and then the grasses, panicum, which is a native scorchgrass, and then perennials, yarrow, aster, and that sort of thing. So that's the plant palette. In these planting areas that are directly adjacent to the house, we have, we have these pockets of of plants that are, they're tucked into some of the alcove-like areas, and those will contain perennials and, and shrubs, and then there will be some native shrubs in, in some of these other areas down the walkway towards the water and against the house. And it's really a light touch, you know, we're not, we're not over landscaping this, we're not putting in ornamental plants that require intensive maintenance, nothing on this site will require fertilizer. There will be no herbicide applications, so the, the, the chemical input will be non-existent here. Of course, we're cognizant and, and concerned about any kind of chemical runoff that could end up in the, in the, in the river, and that's, that's a principal approach, that's a philosophy of our firm and of the client, so we, we agreed from the beginning that that was, that would be the approach towards the landscape philosophy of the site, and we'll be very careful during construction to protect the, the landform in the, in the, in the, the root zones of these mature trees, so that, those are our priorities. I think that sums up our approach to the site landscape, I'd be happy to answer any questions now.
Tim, any questions?
I know.
Ken?
No.
Hey, I don't have any questions, I really can't see if anybody else is here, I keep asking if there's another presenter, because since you shared the screen, I can't see the participants, do you have anybody else?
We, we do not.
Okay.
Brian, if you can just stop sharing your screen that way, but yeah, thank you.
Is any, is the applicant have anything else to say to the commission?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Paul and Barbara Diversa are on, and they may want to say a few words.
Yes, I want to for Paul and I, we want to thank you for the opportunity to present our project to you. We're very excited about it, our family's very excited about it. We love the team that we have gathered. And they certainly have echoed what it is that we would like to achieve in this home. Taking the home and letting it nestle into the natural landscape without shifting and changing things around. I'm really excited, and I've been very excited working with Lucian, as well as Paul, working with Lucian. But, I'm, sorry Lucian, but I lean really towards working with Brian on working with all the, the landscaping and the natives, and I'm, I'm very much into that. We have a bunch of projects that we've been working on down here in, in the Mango Point area, and I've been creating pollinating pathways using the natural native plant species. And the beauty of it that we want to come together to create on this property is, one, organic, no chemicals, maintenance to be, you know, minimal because the native plants will establish themselves and have the ability to sustain themselves beautifully like they should be because they're native, so super excited about that. And yeah, so that's, that's kind of it, so we're, we're, we're super excited and happy to present this to you, so thank you.
Great, thank you, it's a beautiful home. Anybody else have any comments? For the applicant? No comments from Tim or Ken either, right? Okay, do Abby, do we have a motion for this?
Sure, the, the motion here, so there's a summary and recommendations that was included in the commission's packet information. And essentially, what the, the findings would be is, is that the, the project as proposed is generally consistent with the coastal management policies of the state and town, and, and within that, there are a couple brief findings relative to the, the, the project is consistent with the 2012 plan of conservation and development, that measures have been taken through design to mitigate any potential erosion or sedimentation issues that could result during or post-construction, that water quality and stormwater impacts have been addressed in both stormwater design and landscaping choices. And that there are a few conditions that staff recommended, again, based on the plan that was originally submitted, so what you've seen tonight is some of the elements that will address these conditions, so we know that they're well on their way to being taken care of. But the, the, the conditions that are listed here, there's one for primary conditions, an additional site plan condition relative to the home gym square footage, and then the one that I mentioned that would give staff And then the one that I mentioned that would give staff and the applicant teams the flexibility, if there's any modifications needed to the stormwater features as they get into excavation and working on the site that we could then work, work easily with the prior approval of the commission to resolve those in terms of design and final, final location.
Right. So, so I see on page four, you have four conditions. Right? Are those still applicable, given the updated plans?
They, they would, well, no, so erosion controls. So number one would still be applicable. Number two would be applicable. Three is applicable. Four is applicable. The additional site plan condition relative to the roof overhang would, would not be based on what you saw this evening. And then a substitute for that would be the, the ability for flexibility and final sign off from staff for stormwater design.
And I just want to confirm, this is Tim, just confirm for the record, there's a note on the bottom of this staff report that says that it was provided to the applicant. Just want to make sure that was correct.
I believe that it was sent. I'm sure you can confirm whether or not you received it.
Yeah, I believe that we did receive it. I'm just looking to see if I, but.
And that makes sense because the, the, the new plans tonight were a response to these conditions, I think. Okay.
Hey, does anybody want to take a stab at the motion for this?
Sure. A move that we find that the application is consistent with the modifications or conditions that were just outlined for us by Abby that are contained in the staff report that was shared with the applicant and reflected in the new plans that were presented tonight. And the only addition beyond the four conditions outlined in that report is just the addition that that the applicant has the flexibility to resolve stormwater management features with any issues with that with, with our staff without having to come back to the commission for that.
So you make a motion for approval of PL-21-5 consistent with your comments?
Exactly.
Are you a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion between the commission members?
Nope.
Tim? No? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I all oppose. It's three, nothing. Congratulations and good luck with your project.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Well done presentation by everyone, too. Want to put that out there as well.
They're an awesome, they're an awesome team.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks so much for your time tonight.
Appreciate it.
And the support. Waterford's been a very good proponent for all the projects that we've had in motion and we're appreciative of the support of the development that we're doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Take care now.
Have a good night.
Okay, so that is four. How about item number five? Do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Okay. I know we spoke at length, Abby, on commission, on commission business number six. I'm wondering if it might make a little more sense to wait until we have the other two members. It's up to you, but I'd like to have everybody get at least the first kind of preview. For Tim and Ken, it was something that I had discussed with Abby recently about putting a new item on the agenda every single time of for commission business, one to review past projects, one to talk about upcoming projects. So it kind of keeps us on, on task, keeps the staff kind of on task. Nothing falls through the cracks. So we, you know, we talk about all the different regulation amendments and, and projects. And so this can keep it on the, on the radar for everyone. She, we didn't list the, the items here tonight, but there are a list of items that Abby had. I can send them out to everybody. Maybe for the next meeting, Abby, and I'm sorry, we kind of pushed for tonight. I just, I didn't know that Karen wasn't going to be here and Joe, too. So I, I, I just think that we should probably wait until we have all the members to do the first one and then we'll keep it going from there. It'll be shorter as time goes on. But I don't know what anyone else thinks.
I, I, I don't want to waste Abby's time by having her go through it if, if, you know, we're just going to have to repeat it for everybody else.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So why don't we just skip over item six and move that to the next agenda, Abby? And then the administrative review. Want you, you want to tell us briefly about that?
Sure. As I, I'm sure many, many of you are aware, there's been some recent legislation and adopted rules at the state level that affect zoning regulations and a number of actually other, other things as well. But the primary elements that we will be handling are, are zoning pieces. There's also an extension of virtual meeting opportunities that we'll go through at the next, the next meeting as well that was put in with the Implementor Bill. But Public Act 2129 is the bulk of the changes that, that we're looking at. And some of the effects, some of the, the regulation amendments that we've been discussing is Tim had sent me an email sort of calling out some of the, the issues relative to multifamily unit sizes, parking requirements and those types of things. So we have, we have a fair amount of work to do if we choose not to opt out of any of the provisions in, in 2129. And so those, and they range from needing to address the scope and structure of our accessory apartment definitions versus accessory dwelling units. We don't quite line up with the state language and some of those standards are a little bit different. I will be speaking with the town attorney relative to our fees for multifamily development and whether or not our zoning compliance fees on the after post-commission permitting relative to the site fees are run afoul of the new legislation concerning fees not exceeding what would be traditionally charged for single-family homes. So we'll look through that and give you a recommendation on it. The town did a previous opt-out on temporary healthcare structures and we'll just need to review whether that opt-out still stands or if we have anything else that we need to do relative to the new legislation. And then there's, there's certain elements that the commission is now obligated to address relative to housing development and consistency with state plans. So we want to make sure that we go through those pieces. There's a lot of language of things that, that may be adopted. And so we'll, we'll take you through each of those and what changes in our regulations may need to be considered in order to address them. And then we have some other pieces of, you know, considerations of municipal opt-out from some of the zoning provisions for municipal town properties, which we may want to consider. There are some training requirements that takes, that will not go into effect for some time. But it's something that we should be sort of preparing for and as the states and, you know, Yukon Clear and other organizations start to put together a training program, we'll want to make sure that commission members are compliant with that as time goes on. You know, the, the reiteration of the Affordable Housing Plan requirements, which we're well on our way to completing. So that's great. And then there's some consistency elements between application timeframes and review processes between inland wetlands permits and planning and zoning permits. There are also in terms of extensions for validity of permits, there's some new language relative to that. So a lot of that is sort of the administrative background. There are some other pieces that we will need to get sort of commission, commission opinion on and, and get further into the, I almost said further into the weeds. But the, the, the new marijuana legislation relative to retail and, and production will need to address your thoughts on, on how we handle that and make some recommendations also back and forth between the first selectmen and the commission. So we'll, and we'll do a whole host of sort of briefs for you on where things are going. There is a legislative update scheduled. I can't remember if it's CASIO or another organization is hosting it Thursday afternoon, I believe at one or two o'clock. And so I can certainly send out a link to that if anybody is interested. I'll just forward the invite that, that I received. To the whole commission.
Yes.
So we'll do that. And I, you know, we're, so we're going to be attending that. We're going to be meeting with Rob Avina and then, and as I forwarded to Greg, sort of a spreadsheet table that I'm, I'm working on to kind of give a one-to-one, here's the change in the legislation, here's what Waterford currently does, and here are the things the commission can consider. So just trying to break that all out for everybody. So we'll, we'll have more at the next meeting. Nothing is, is imminent right now in terms of things we have to do, but by October, we have some elements that we need to address.
So Abby, just a quick thing, you had sent something out to me in an email with a bunch of changes. Is that what you've just mentioned now?
Yes, yes, that multifamily element that was being done to support a particular developer, but would have been beneficial to all dealt with minimum unit sizes and those exceed the minimums identified in the new legislation, which basically brings us down to no more than what state building code would require. So we'll have to talk about, and again, there's some opt-out provisions and we'll have to talk about whether or not that's something we want to do or whether we want to simply modify the regulations to accommodate.
But you're going to break it down, what, what it is, what we have and that, okay.
Yep. Okay. Compares to what other towns may or may not have done. I know Groton is already using the minimum, the, the building code as its, as its minimum. And so we'll call over there and see how that's going relative to their, their multifamily projects and get any feedback that they might have, too.
Okay.
So that's, that's where we stand. So we'll have probably a lot more in, in forthcoming meetings. And, and I know going forward, as we start to put some of these things together, we'll obviously, obviously have written materials for everybody to be able to review. In terms of discussion, I, Tim had talked about with me and then Greg and I also separately spoke about commission schedules for the summer. Greg, I don't know if you want to lead this part of things, but it might be good to.
Yeah, I was just gonna, that's all right, either one. I was just going to get into it because I, I probably should have talked about it at number six, but Tim had some issue schedule for the summer. So what are your thoughts on, what were your thoughts on that, Tim?
Oh, just that with, I, I know we have a number of you know, projects coming down the pike here. And with the last couple of years, we, we've had trouble, I think, getting a quorum in July. And so I, I just wanted to remind everybody, you know, to, to look at their schedules ahead of time. I know we don't have everybody here, obviously, but, you know, just, you know, to whatever we can, you know, just check our schedules and make sure we're actually going to be able to get a quorum for our meetings in July.
And we'll, we'll send an email out to everybody tomorrow morning, first thing, just to, to give a reminder of when the dates are and whether or not folks are, are going to have any conflicts over the course of the summer.
We did. I did talk to Abby about trying to keep Zoom as long as possible, which may make, may help things along. If I'm away, I might be, I probably should be able to make it through Zoom. So hopefully we can keep this going for as long as possible on matters that don't really require in person, like something like tonight, it went fine. Presentation went well, was approved, it was easy. That being said, in July, if we can't make one of the meetings, I don't want to delay any applicants. So I'm thinking about maybe trying to see if we can get three at a special meeting some other time so that the applicants can get their, their stuff either, you know, heard and approved. It may not be the 27th that is scheduled, but it might be that, you know, the 26th during the day or something like that. Or whenever we can kind of come up with three people to, to have a special meeting. So we don't delay the applicants. But, but I think we, I'll send an email out to everybody, too, about the, the, the schedule and seeing about who's away. I'm away the 27th, the second meeting in July. I was hoping at first, Tim, that that would be the safe futures issue because I'm abstaining anyway. So, but I don't know if that's going to make it or not. But, you know, you know, if anybody has any vacations for those two meetings, please let me know so we can, we can decide what to do.
I'm good for both.
You are, okay.
Yeah, and I, I intend to attend both of those meetings. I'm certainly open to, you know, rescheduling meetings and special meetings if, if we need to define quorum. My, my only issue is I, I'm, I'm working on, on, in a palette brief right now. And so I know that things may get a little bit busy for me at work, but having this Zoom option allows me to zoom in from my office if I need to and still make it to those meetings. So with that being said, I'm open to daytime meetings as well. My work is good about letting me be flexible with that.
I just had a question. Is there going to be?
What is?
Person? Meetings or?
At some point. We haven't figured out when that point is yet, especially during the summer, maybe it might make it a little easier to, to stay with Zoom, but.
And the, the ability to hold the virtual meetings has been extended through April of 22. And, you know, you know, it was what Greg and I had chatted about, and then the commission can certainly continue to discuss is if, if anything significant or controversial, or we think there's going to be significant public interest, certainly we can schedule an in-person meeting anytime for that. And then, and can kind of take them, you know, the meetings as a, as it dictates.
You know, one thing that Ken, the Zoom meetings offers, tonight, they had three presenters. You know, they saved a little bit of money by not having to, you know, all travel in and wait through the meeting and, and, you know, if that's something we can do for the applicants on, on simple meetings like, like tonight, then, you know, I'm, I'm probably in favor of keeping it that way. But what's your schedule during the day? If we need to for July for special meetings?
For me, I work from 7:30 to 5:00.
Okay. So not good then.
Well, I mean, if I have to, I mean, there's, there is, you know, availability if I can, you know. I, I don't know how, how long the meetings go. I mean, I can take time during the day, but it just means I have to work later at night.
Yeah, no, no, this is just in case, case we need to, case we feel like we want to move something along and, and the 27th. Abby, you said two people are away that meeting, right? Myself and, and who else?
And I thought, I, I thought I said that John was away, but I want to, I'll confirm with him to make sure I wasn't confusing his email with.
From tonight? Yeah. Right, okay. So, so we can check that and see. But I'll check with them on their availability, too. All right. So do we have anything else to discuss? No? All right.
If, if I could just say real quick, Ken, welcome. I, I think I, I was muted when I tried to say that before. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Ken. I, I should have said that as well. I, I talked to you by email and welcomed you, but yeah, you're right. And I, and I meant to welcome Dan Raiden, too, to the meeting. And then he left. I was going to do that toward the end of the meeting. But he was here for a small portion of the meeting. He's chairman of the Economic Development Commission. And he wanted to try to, to, to see our meeting and try to get some collaboration between our commission, his commission, inland wetlands and possibly design review. So we're trying to work on something like that. So. Yeah, welcome, Ken.
Thank you. This, this is interesting because I'm on the other side where I used to present to this commission years ago. So now I get to, to listen versus talk. So it's kind of nice.
Anything else from anybody? We're going to enjoy a nice, maybe stormy holiday weekend, but have a nice weekend, everyone. Any motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll move to adjourn.
Second?
Yep.
Ten seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Everybody.
Take care.
Have a good weekend.
Have a good weekend.